We'll call a meeting to order. I ask you to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call.
Gary.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
A variety of different things going on throughout the city. Fargo Cast Public Health will host a news conference to introduce Harm Reduction Center on Monday, July 23rd at 10:00 a.m. The main goal of the HRC is to help people in the community stay as healthy as possible by reducing disease and other possible health burdens along with those people who inject illicit drugs. The Shiners Hospitals for Children, Twin Cities, will hold a free screening clinic for children under the age of 18 on July 17th, 2018, at the Fargo Cast Public Health. Screens will evaluate children with a variety of bone, muscle, joint, and other related concerns to determine if they would benefit from additional treatment. Those interested are encouraged to call to schedule an appointment as space is limited and have great services available for people. Inspection. In review, building permits values for the first six months of 2018 were higher than 2017 in most categories. Commercial building, remodeling, and expansion totals $81 million, which is $29 million higher than 2017. New public buildings total $46 billion, $31 million higher than 2017, and major projects, including the $16.9 million Cedro Hall Project at NDSU, the $11.3 million Deer Creek Elementary School, and the $9 million Discovery Middle School Project. So we have a lot of commercial and public building going on as well. 415 apartments were added totaling $43 million, $19 million higher than the 2017 348, and the average value for apartment units is higher than 2017. The only thing that has gone down is homeowners have gone down about 25 percent, so new homes have gone down. It seemed to be getting back to the level we used to be at. We used to go at a certain pace, and we kind of had a boom the last two years. Library. Coming up, a series of libraries rock themed concerts for kids are planned for the week 23rd through 28th. During Navy Week starting July 23rd, the library will be hosting a series of events leading up to the Fargo Air Show. There will also be performances by three of the Navy Band, Great Lakes Groups, the Brass Ambassadors, the Protocol Combo, and the Ceremonial Brass Band. Three telescopes were generously gifted to the library from MSUM Department of Physics and Astronomy through a grant from the American Astronomical Society. The Sunspotter telescopes provide observers with a safe way to view sunspots, solar ellipses, eclipses, and other solar activity. The telescopes check out for three weeks and are available at each of the Fargo Public Library's location. Police. Officer Mike Clower directed a campaign, "Plague Down an Officer," which provided the opportunity for community members to turn in old, weathered, and tattered American flags and retire them in a proper manner. Members of the Honor Guard also assisted to fold the flags appropriately and fill many boxes. The local organizations saw as the VFW, the American Legion Scouts, and others were willing to take collected fags and retire them appropriately. Chief Todd has heard a number of stories and seen great pictures of the officers interacting and speaking with members of the community, especially with kids. With hot summer days, lemonade stands are popping up, and kids love it when an officer is nice enough to stop and chat, shoot some hoops, or throw a ball around. Keep up the great work. Sounds like the community likes that a bit. Miscellaneous. We have two big events occurring in the Fargo metro during the next few weeks. The first one, the Downtown Fargo Street Fair, takes place this Thursday through Saturday. Whether you're interested in art crafts or just great food, this is a premier event with the tire state, and I encourage you to take part in it. And this is where they're doing that new pilot of beer downtown, right? So we'll see how that works out for you guys. The second event is Navy Week, which the entire metro community will be hosting next week. The accumulation is the Fargo Air Show, which takes place next weekend. In addition to the Navy Blue Angels soaring high above us, I will be jumping out of an airplane leapfrog style with the U.S. Navy on Friday. I hope I'm still alive to serve out my memorial candidates or duties next weekend. We'll see, I guess. And finally, in workforce, we're very pleased to hear that Mike Reddinger has helped us out. His baby girl Ella was born, and she will soon be joining our workforce, right, Mike? Okay. So we'll go on, approve of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda items? Twenty moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July 2nd, 2018, regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through 24 excluding item 20, which has been moved to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Gary.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Regular agenda. We're going to have a presentation tonight regarding the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Program, Nicole Crutchfield, who explained, and we have a team from Gate City here as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's the fun part about the job. I get to introduce Gate City Bank. They are doing a marvelous job with another round yet for the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative. And so they're here to present their next round of money. And we hereby open the application process. We actually already have a waiting list, so it's not a matter of not finding applicants. People are finding their way to us and...
Just tell us who qualifies.
Who qualifies? The House has a limit of $250,000 appraisal, and then the project cost can't exceed $75,000. And so from now until October 31st, we'll be receiving applications to process the next round of home improvement loans.
And then great interest, right?
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to have John Strand come and help you with this one?
Okay.
Should we photo him?
I'm referred to as Senior Vice President of the Great Valley, and I'm happy to be a member of the City of the Capitol. And maybe with the revitalization initiative. Where I started, because we wanted to help people in the neighborhood to be able to preserve their homes and work with thousands of common neighborhoods to be longer. One of our core principles of our mission, David, is to connect with our customers and serve our communities. And when we're doing that, in 2003, we told them dollars and loans and that that is the thing that has been applied to the property of the area. They, I'm happy to present, have like $2 million to this program.
Wow.
To continue the program.
That is fantastic. Get around. This is a really terrific program, and the best thing I can do is everybody should tell everybody else about it. Not everybody knows they qualify and have this program available. This is a program that helps people.
Item 26, revised resolution adopting rules and regulations relative to the operation of agenda and conduct of city commission meetings delayed from the 7/2-18 regular meeting. Nancy is going to explain. This is Nancy Morris. And John Strand, I want to thank you for kind of bringing this up, because when we researched it, it was much more complex than we thought, and if we follow Robert's Rules of Order, this was not a Robert's Rules of Order.
That's correct.
So, as you said, last meeting, there was a discussion about the rules that are typically adopted after the new commission is elected, and these rules have been in place for a number of years. And Commissioner Strand reviewed and asked for further information as to a couple of the rules that were presently in place. In particular, the number F of the pre-existing was that a minority, a member voting in the minority, would have an opportunity to ask for reconsideration 28 days after the meeting. That flowed right into letter G that addressed when a member of a majority may seek reconsideration of a motion. Both of these rules are inconsistent with Robert's Rules of Order. I don't know what the genesis or the reason for the change in the rules were at the time. So I provided information that the existing rules do indicate at letter A that the Robert's Rules of Order will apply unless otherwise changed by the commission. The commission can do that by a motion and vote to change the procedure, and then also a motion and vote to reconsider. And so what is being presented to you today is actually striking out F and G, and instead Robert's Rules of Order would be followed. In that instance, Robert's Rules, a motion for reconsideration may be made at the same meeting in which the motion was initially approved. The motion must be seconded and must be passed by majority vote. So that motion for reconsideration by a majority member and seconded, and then the motion itself comes back on for hearing and discussion. In subsequent meetings, it's actually called a motion to rescind, and a member, it's not specific as to a majority or minority member, can make that motion to rescind a previous action. That motion would have to be carried by a four-fifths vote, so you'd need a higher number of members to actually rescind the motion. And at that time, it could only be rescinded if there had not been a change in position based on the previous motion, such as entering into a contract or some other financial liability. If the motion to rescind is passed, then the motion would come on for hearing again. Somebody would have to make that motion and second that. So presented to you today for your consideration is the resolution adopting the rules of this commission, eliminating F and G.
Any questions? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank John for being on the ball. That was a very good catch, and thank you for doing that for everybody.
Well, thank you. And, you know, it's one of those nuances, but I'll remind the commission, we've had this surface once in the last two years since Commissioner Grinberg and I arrived here, and that was the FedEx decision. So we had a situation where we had a decision made by the body, then waited the 28 days, then had to regurgitate it all over again. And that's maybe not the best word, but... And that was when it surfaced in my mind. This just doesn't make sense that procedurally to allow that to happen when somebody had been a dissenting vote. It's just a rather typical procedure. So thank you all for being considerate of this.
Any other comments?
Motion to rescind the FedEx.
Roll call vote.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. We'll go to public meetings. Donald Crest to come up. Zoning change, multiple dwelling residential to an SR3, SR5, single dwelling residential on lots 10, 12, 17, block 3, lots 2 and 5, west 7 feet, lot 6, east 135 feet, lots 7 and 8, lot 9, block 5, and lot 8, and block 8, Woodruff's Edition, lots 1 and 2, 3, and the west half of lots 4 to 7, Block W, Chase A. Roberts Edition, west 86 feet of lots 9 to 12, Block X, Ernstine's Edition, and others that I think I'll just let Don go through. We've got a lot of numbers in here. Donald, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Crest with the Department of Planning and Development. As the mayor stated with that lengthy list of legal descriptions, this is a proposed zone change for a number of lots. There's 22 lots total in the Woodruffs, Charles A. Roberts, Erskins, and Island Park Edition, all in the Hawthorne neighborhood. This is Hawthorne School here, of course, and these properties are identified by address and also in your packet by the legal description. The current zoning on these properties is MR2, multi-dwelling residential. The proposed zoning is SR3 or SR5. So here's the existing zoning of those properties. The beige or this color is the multi-dwelling residential. And here is the list. This is also the list that's in your packet, as indicated in the chart in your packet. These properties, again, are zoned MR2, but they want to go to a single dwelling residential. This is a staff-initiated zone change. The purpose of this rezone is to have the zoning districts in this area more accurately reflect the actual use on these properties. And our staff has done extensive field work of going out there, talking to all the neighbors, meeting with them, actually going out through the neighborhoods in preparation for this zone change. This is beneficial for several reasons, including preservation of the existing housing within the neighborhood. The area came to our attention when a special assessment district was created and residents were notified of their estimated specials. So again, this lays out the change here. These last three on the bottom here were opted out. There was an ability to opt out, and I believe these have changed since the June 5th Planning Commission. These owners have opted out, and that's also explained in your staff report prepared by Mr. Grand Strand of our planning department. The revised ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office is included in your packet. The recommendation for approval is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's recommendation, or presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak of this rezoning? Is there anyone wishing to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move the suggested motion, and I have a comment or question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Strand.
Donald, maybe...
Mr. Grinberg.
Perhaps you can just, you know, from my recollection of the planning commission meeting with you and Nicole, you know, we have very few pockets like this in the city, and this is kind of a way to update that, reflect the current usage, so that it's a proactive measure.
Yes, sir. That's a good way to characterize it.
But it looks like you're trying to get single dwellings and take away all the apartments that people are concerned about?
Again, it analyzes the use that's actually on the property and make the zoning match the actual use of the property. It doesn't really take away any apartments, like you'd say. And that's...
Just one other comment. We had no objections from property owners on...
No, there were no items included in your packet, and I talked to Tyron Grand Strand this morning, and he said he had not received any additional comments since that time or today. So he did not, I don't know if there's anyone here to testify, evidently not.
Mr. Gerg.
Are any of the tax rates changing? So, multi-dwelling, higher tax rate if there's so many units within, are any of these going to be charged more?
Yes, sir. And I think that's part of the point of this, is that at this time, the special assessment is based on the zoning. I'm going to ask our director if she wants to have any more comment on that.
Dan here.
Well, I think right now, this came to our attention as part of a special assessment. But Commissioner Gerg, are you asking about actual taxes?
Both. I mean, if someone got a bill in the mail they weren't expecting, they'd be mad at us.
Sure. I can't speak to the tax rate per se, but the special assessment is related to the special assessment policy, and so this came to our attention. I will say, we should be looking at zoning just based on the uses. So this was zoned back in the 50s and back in the probably late 90s, we did a kind of an older neighborhood. We went through the neighborhood to look at downzoning properties, so back before the Currently in Development Code, we had kind of more of a pyramidal scheme, if you will, where the higher intense use allows everything below it as a zoning district. And so we went through in the 90s to kind of realign those zoning districts. And at the time, when we inventoried this property, this was still being used as rental. And then when we came to our attention with this last special assessment project, we came to our attention that most of them are actually owner occupied or single dwelling owner occupied. So we just wanted to align those to each other. So taxes will be handled separately, and specials will be handled separately. But if you have a question on the special assessment policy...
Dan, you want to answer that question?
Well, this all came about with the 4th Street project, which is an arterial. An arterial, we have the caps. So using those caps, MRs are at a higher rate than a single family. So we're trying to adjust it and make it proper if they are single-family dwellings and used as such. This is what brought it to light. So we started looking at it, and we will move them to an SR.
So it could potentially save people money then, because it's...
Correct.
Good.
And then, Dan, we had that one house that had a widow's or an add-on apartment or something like that. Would that convert that to residential, or would that still be considered a multi-complex apartment? Is that on here?
Looking at the map. I believe that one's going to change also.
So that will go back to be residential?
It'll be go back to an SR.
Any other questions? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate, and you've kind of heard bits of this already, but this is just another example of another incremental impact of affected change from the citizens' concerns about where we were at with specials. And when we had this surface for the South 4th Street project, this one house in particular that was on the market, with all of the things added up, it almost made the house unmarketable and could have cost the sale. So it all adds up. When we look at the shifting back of policies, back to the 2015 policies that were in place instead of the 70-30 split, or instead of the 50-50, if we look at this incremental increase or change going forward, and then we look at the studying, the task force that will be coming forward to study the other aspects of specials, we're going where the citizens asked us to go and giving them results piece by piece. But my sense is that people will sincerely appreciate this effort on all of your parts to give them some relief.
How's that going to impact the condos that are on there then for the 4th Street project? If you realign and make theirs less, is it going to go up for the people that live in condos then? Okay.
This is an attempt to get the residents a better break. It still hasn't been assessed as far as everybody, as far as costs at, so... Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item 28, second reading and final adoption of ordinance in many sections, 180304, 180308, and enacting section 18318 and article 1803 of chapter 18 of the Fargo Municipal Code relating to use and care of streets and sidewalks. It was delayed from the 7/2 regular meeting. And I have Nancy Morris here, but I think Nicole Crutchfield is going to explain this. Or both of you, or just you?
I think just me for right now, but I'll probably call on Mr. Johnson here for a minute. So I'm really here to answer any questions. I know this has been on your agenda for a few times, and between the first and second reading, we had some additional press that brought to our attention that maybe people that I thought were around the table were not around the table. So we went back to the drawing board a little bit and had an open house last Monday. And a lot of those comments received are in your packet. There's both pros and cons with the food truck proposed pilot. And so at this point, staff is actually recommending, we actually have three motions on the suggested table, but maybe just to quick highlight what we're trying to do here. So for the public, what we're trying to do is basically just pilot test a food truck program for the remaining 12 weeks of the summer. And with that, there's many potential complications that could come from food trucks that include trash and noise and obstructing the right-of-way. And what staff contends, as we gathered around the table over the last eight months or so, realized we have a lot of codes already in place in our municipal code that help govern trash and things like that in the right-of-way. So we thought, hey, let's see what other obstacles might come out of a food truck test and see how that would go this summer. And so unfortunately, under section 18, there's a rule that says you can't bend in the right-of-way. So what we're trying to ask for is a temporary sunset, if that, if you will, so that we can try this program out. Some of the commentary that we received, I'm going to just pan through to the map here, is if these are the right streets to be prohibiting. And I think based on some input we received from Randy and Warren with the OB and several other restaurants downtown is wanting to square off this 1st Avenue and 4th Street. So Randy might be here, and there might be other food vendors. I think some of the food truck vendors, there's a Food Truck Association that some vendors are in and some vendors are not. The Food Truck Association was a little surprised we were moving this quickly and with the pilot program, so they were just asking for a little bit more time to look at what regulations could be out there. What staff contends is, let's give this a try, see what happens. We have interstate parking on the ready. If we do have a nuisance on the street, that we need some additional help for cleanup, they'd be willing to help provide that extra support for staff, and then we see how it goes. And so I'm here to answer any questions, and we go from there.
Questions for the commission. So there's two options, either adapt what you come up with, or they delay till 2019?
Yeah. So if you want to, and then there's third motion is that I received some additional comment, why not try the citywide instead of just downtown proper, because there's a lot of activities near parks, et cetera. And so that's a third motion. So Commissioner Gerg asked that I provide that motion for you tonight, too. And so if you want to have it, if you tell me where you want to go, I can tell you which motion. But if you want to have it just in downtown, that's one of your first three motions. And basically, the difference between those first three motions have to do with the second reading or waiving the second reading. If you want to wait till 2019, or if you want to allow it citywide, those are kind of your three choices.
Mr. Gerg.
So one of the concerns is, or at least perceived by me, is that, you know, we're going to allow food trucks to compete with restaurants in downtown Fargo, exclusively downtown Fargo, and that will put pressure on their businesses to compete with a temporary business that doesn't necessarily have all the tax burdens that they have or all the requirements for staffing and things like that. One way to relieve that would be to let the market work, and that would be to take away the restriction that it must be downtown, allow it to be all over the city of Fargo. Therefore, you wouldn't have the density of the food trucks in one location. I know for a fact that if a food truck went to the Asgad Hornbacher's, they would have business. If they went to the car wash on 25th Street and 52nd Avenue, they would have business. They could go to far north Fargo by the base, they would have business. So we need to allow this to go to the, if we're going to have a pilot to see if this is a good thing for the city of Fargo, allow it to be for the city of Fargo, not just for downtown Fargo. And that will alleviate a lot of the concerns, and it'll also show that there are other places besides downtown that people like to hang out and eat food and have a good time.
Mr. Pepcorn.
I have a couple of questions for Nicole. So right now, do the food trucks, like, does our health department inspect them right now? So we already do that.
And they would continue to do that for those on the street, so...
But, I mean, that's already, if we don't do anything, and to me, the food trucks are a great addition. I think they're, and I don't think they're competing with a restaurant, just from my own experience. I don't debate whether I'm going to go out to eat and then walk by a food truck and go, oh, my God, I think I'll just stop there and have dinner there. And so that's just my own editorial comment. I think it's, the food trucks want to go where there's lots of people. That's why they want to be downtown. And so I think we need to, like you said, let the free market work, and then we, I think safety is an issue, and I think maybe the whole not being right at the entrance to a restaurant, that might be a good thing. But other than that, the whole thing of seeing these red lines, what roads you can't be on, that's ridiculous. I will not support that. So that's mine. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I have a question, Mayor. Nicole, could you explain this map more clearly to us? Does that allow or not allow food trucks? The red lines.
Yeah. So our concerns were food trucks on, would be not to allow them on the red lines. So the red lines on Broadway, on Roberts, in our, you know, kind of where it's already somewhat congested, that would be our concern, where parking is at a premium. And so we are mindful that food trucks do compete with, on-street food trucks do compete with on-street parking. And so everybody wants to be at 2nd Avenue, Broadway, that's the hotspot, and then if we kind of move out from there, where are the less active areas? And so we were purposely focusing on the less active areas so we wouldn't obstruct on-street parking.
So any of those white lines, they could put a...
Correct.
And then further, define right-of-way for me, just for my sake?
For, you know, kind of the layman perspective, it's from curb to curb. And the right-of-way actually goes from face of building, face of building in downtown for the most part, but if you can think about where you put a food truck from curb to curb...
So it's not on the berm?
Not on the berm.
And not between the sidewalks?
On the street.
And how do they determine where they allow, I mean, anywhere a car can park?
Correct. So we would ask the food trucks to follow the parking limitation. So if it's two-hour parking, four-hour parking, 90-minute, 30-minute, we would ask them to follow those parking signs.
Can I add one more thing? But the other thing is, so with block nine, let's say that starts to get, next summer, well, if we lock something off or something, they're flexible. That's part of the thing. And I think if we're not careful, then we'll end up doing damage. And I think we'd love to limit competition to our businesses. You know, there's lots of people that would like to only have the only business in town. That's not the American way. way. So free market is a good thing, and I think we should let them compete. If we have issues, then down the road, we can revisit it. But for now, public safety, they are being checked for, you know, food safety, they're following the traffic rules. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Strahan.
Thank you. And I know you met with some of the food truck folks and also others. Do they see this as feasible or not? Like if somebody's in a four-hour parking zone or a 90-minute parking zone, is that, or are you talking like a little peddler, not like a bona fide food truck?
Well, and if you went a lot of specifics, Grant Larson is here with Public Health, but I think the, for this pilot purposes, we want all enclosed, I'm going to get the terminology wrong, but all enclosed vehicles. So if they have to unhook their trailer, that's not something we're real supportive of, if they need to, because we want them to move in two to four hours. And so it has to be a vehicle where the street license-worthy vehicle that they're selling out of.
And in their mind, is that feasible?
I would, you know, we got mixed results from talking with the food vendors. Some were for it, some were against. I think that a couple gentlemen in the back were actually, they contend that there's not all that many vendors are, you know, in existence in Fargo as it is. And so, and a lot of them are already booked this summer. So probably their primary concern is that this is too late for the summer to be really impactful. In staff's opinion, if we get one food truck downtown to just try it out, that might be success. And so, but they think it's a little concerning. You know, some of these food trucks get like 30 feet long, and, you know, with the trailer plus the truck plus everything else, and then the loading and unloading, but they're going to have to find spaces where they can do that in downtown.
Downtown business development had some comments on this, their downtown partners, it was good to address, because your peppcorn stating, aren't there some people that did not want them on the marked streets that you're talking about?
Correct.
So that's what you're trying to accommodate?
Yeah, I mean, we're just trying to accommodate everybody, which is near impossible.
Can I have a motion, please?
I move motion number one. Allows the pilot to start.
Is this a public hearing, or is this just an open hearing? I have somebody who wants to speak in back. Is this a staff report, or is this?
No, I mean, I think if you want to open it up for a public hearing, that'd be great.
Do you want to hear, John?
Certainly.
Mr. Chairman, Eric had a comment, I think.
Yep, when we get to the motions, maybe I can help you step through a little bit of messy stuff.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm one of the guys who've been, I represent the Texas Q, and I'm one of the guys that's been around the city for three years.
Name, please.
Jason Halverson. So if there's some other questions that you guys might want to ask, I'm certainly here at your disposal. Get into some of the things that we were looking at in the map. I think I agree with Commissioner Dave about if we completely block off downtown, we don't really, I mean, these roads are on the outskirts. And in our discussions of what we've had, we want to go ahead and continue this program because we want to go ahead. We believe that we need to get the program running, work out the kinks, and then come back to you and fix some things. But some things, like at least in our concerns, are we can't park downtown. Well, and I heard Commissioner Garrick talk about, well, if we're going to go here, if we're going to go there, there's only so many places where people congregate. We've, you know, I've tested markets all over the city. A lot of us have tested markets all over the city, and there's no one particular thing other than being downtown that's going to be significant. So, I mean, I'd like, the fact that it's, most of the downtown's blocked off, and we have to go to the outskirts, you know, and the other thing about the people being worried, and I say it like this, if these restaurants can sit a person in two minutes, and they'd be on their way to lunch or dinner or date or whatever they have to go, then we have really something to talk about. But I agree, we're not going to be pulling up into their driveway and wanting to compete. So we just, those are some of the things that we want to just.
Two minutes? If I come to your place, it's two minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, as long as I ain't get a line, you know, 40 people deep, sure. But I mean, that's, your average food truck is about two minutes. And like I said, we don't want to take anything away from the city of Fargo. We want to bring people. I mean, people come in droves to see us. It's almost an attraction. In some other cities, that's what they do. And we're glad to be on the forefront of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you one question? So if they had this rule where you could park on the street, but you had to follow the parking rules, could you do that, or is that?
All things given, absolutely. But we also, that's where some of the things, where the kinks, where we need your guys' help as well. You know, if we're going to park some places, we're going to run a pilot, you know, like I mentioned to Nicole and Mark and them, we need to have specific parking. Because what happens, we go to work one day, and we got six cars there. Are we going to start towing cars or what? But, you know, that's the thing that we need to do. We need to have a timeframe of we can be there. The food trucks need to be able to move off and on, not sit there stationary for days in and days out. So they go there for a certain amount of times, then your time is up, then the other cars come through.
Can I ask one more? So right now, like power and all that, you're on a private lot, so you're hooked up. How would you do that if you were on the street?
Well, the other thing is with that is, that's something we still got to get figured out, too. We're going to have to have generators. Some of the generators are loud, I get, and some of the concern was decibels. I guess we're just going to have to work from that. I mean, there are generators out there that are very quiet. We'll just have to make sure that they're out of the way and not a nuisance.
Thank you. Randy?
I guess, Randy Thurston, I guess you expected me to speak, you know, and we can do our burgers in a minute and 15 seconds at Jailbeers. So we are very fast at what we do as well. And I just, I think the boundaries are wrong on this, you know, and Warren and I, 40 years ago, we're downtown at the old Broadway when nobody wanted to come downtown. Nobody was spending money downtown. We stayed in downtown. We spent millions and millions of dollars in recent years through the renovation and asked to do this, to bring in CIA apparel and 120 employees there. We've spent millions of dollars. When we were downtown initially, we were paying $6,000 a month annually in real estate taxes. And this last year, that was $84,000. So we pay maintenance fees on the site, on the cleaning of the sidewalks and the putting up the plants. And so, you know, we're doing a lot more than someone who can park in the street and take away my business. There are food trucks that sell burgers. There's food trucks that sell tacos, the same things that I sell on First Avenue. And what, by this map that you have here, they can serve that on the next block over. So, you know, I don't think it's fair. I think we've been down there, we've been doing this job, and I don't think I need to have them across the street from me. Just don't think that what you've asked us to do, what other commissions have asked us to do and invest in downtown Fargo, we've done that. And I would expect that we'd be protected with our investments downtown so that we can pay you your property taxes. So I would change the boundaries. If you're going to test it, I would change the boundaries. It would be, and I'm, it's the First Avenue to Fourth Street, and then First Avenue to Fourth Street up to Second Avenue, so that if they're going to park there, you know, they're at least two blocks away from our establishment, you know. I certainly understand what they're saying about where they want to be, and high traffic is where everybody wants to be. But that's why we build restaurants where we build restaurants. That's why we redevelop property and hopefully be able to attract our customers to come to downtown Fargo. So I hope that you won't take that away from those who absolutely invest and are there 12 months out of the year versus occasionally on a street. So that's all I've got, unless you've got something for me.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Strahan.
Thank you, Randy. And of course, we appreciate our businesses downtown, especially the long-term ones also. But somebody's asked me, well, how, I'm just asking, how is it that restaurant over here can take public sidewalk and use it, turn it into their space, essentially? Like you've really invested in front of, for example, the old Broadway. How did that work? Because years ago, that wasn't an option. Now we have it. And how does that work? And how's that fair enough?
Again, the city has asked us, you know, when they do the focus studies and what they want to attract downtown, to their downtown, they ask us to do these kinds of things. Can you, you know, when we were talking about the redevelopment and the two-way streets of the committee that I was on, to changing the one ways to two ways, they also asked me, they said, well, we'd like to widen. Would you want us to widen your sidewalk so that you can have outside dining? And on that particular side of NP Avenue, we didn't want that at the time. Could we use it now? Because I have a restaurant on the other side of the street? Certainly. But we're always asked to do these things. These things, you know, we spent, just the fencing that we use at the old Broadway is very decorative. It was done by an artist. We spent $50,000 on it so it didn't look like cattle gates, you know? So we put in and we invest in downtown Fargo. But these things were asked to do. When we asked the city on our own to do a parklet, parklet, yeah, because the younger generation that worked for me said, hey, these are cool, they're doing them all over, we're really denied. We had a short period of time where they allowed it, and then they said, no, you can't do that. Well, that was right in front of our place in a parking spot. And that was for entertainment, and, you know, so that was denied to us. But all of these things are all designed into the city streets. They're all designed into the, to the sidewalks, to all the new development, including all your bikeways and bike paths. All of that is designed in. And we're all part of that.
More specifically, though, you know, so I understand it, the, let's talk old Broadway.
Sure.
You've literally put infrastructure out there on the public sidewalk.
Well, first off, half of it's ours.
That's why I was asking to define who owns.
For that, if you actually did the survey, half of that we own. And then we worked with planning to decide where we could go to, how much parking, how did they want to push people out. Some of it has to do with people riding bikes on those wide sidewalks. And so it deters them from that. So there's all kinds of different reasons why it was built the way it was built and designed and then given permission to do that.
And yet, half of that's on the public right-of-way?
Yes. But again, Commissioner Strahan, those are the things we're asked to do.
And some might say they're asking the food trucks to show up, too.
And that's fine, but do they pay to have the sidewalks cleaned? Do they pay to have the flowers in the downtown area? Whose restaurants are their employees going to use? You know, are they walking over to one of my, I have people who come into my restaurant all the time from various businesses or from protesters. They're coming in all the time into my restaurants, and they use our facilities. We have to build those facilities according to the codes, the city codes of the city of Fargo. We have all of that in place. We pay for all that. We buy land for all of that. You know, we have parking. We figure out how to run these businesses. I just don't need somebody at my front door or right on my next block.
Josie, do you have something?
Josie Dan's, 420 Broadway. I guess I just have a few quick comments and then one question. The first is, I guess I can agree with part of what Randy is saying. I don't have any problem with food trucks. We love having the food trucks downtown. But I guess I understand where he's coming from, because one thing that I have noticed with the influx of food trucks is there is a problem with maintenance in downtown. There has been a huge influx of trash and garbage in downtown Fargo. And I get customers commenting about how the streets are gross. And I get downtown residents commenting about how when they go out and walk on a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning, it's pretty disgusting in downtown. And I have to agree. And I think a lot of that, not all of it, but a lot of it does come from food trucks. And I can attest to that because I clean up after them all the time. We have one directly behind us with Taco Brothers, and then Texas Barbecue is across the street from us. We don't have much problem with that one. But I do see the trash, and I guess I wonder kind of what Randy was saying, as a business, we pay to clean the streets. We pay for the bid in downtown Fargo. We pay for the overall maintenance of downtown Fargo, and we pay to have our business there. And I guess the food trucks, they don't really have those same responsibilities. And so I am concerned about just the overall appearance of downtown with more food trucks. My second question, this is a question, if we allowed the food trucks to park on Broadway, let's say, like we didn't have these red lines, and they could just park anywhere, would that mean that a food truck could just come and park directly in front of our store, Zambros', and take up our three spaces right in front of our store? Because then I do have a problem with that. I don't so much have a problem with this up there because those aren't prime parking spots. Those aren't places that people need to access as readily. So I guess in terms of parking, I do have a problem with opening it up to food trucks. And I think it's only fair that businesses should be able to maintain the few spots in front of them. And I guess, again, I agree with Randy that a food truck shouldn't be able to pull up right in front of his business and compete with him. Those are my main comments, just the overall maintenance. And then on-street parking is still a huge issue in downtown, even though there is plenty of parking. But I would have an issue if a food truck were able to pull up right in front of my business and just park there.
So you support the red lines?
I guess I support the red lines. Again, I appreciate the food trucks, and I love having them in downtown. I do think they bring value to downtown Fargo. And I, you know, I think if we allowed it to be a citywide thing, that's great. But I think they would still all come to downtown. So it can be an all Fargo thing, but they want to be downtown, and that's great.
Well, the good thing to remember, it's considered a pilot. So part of what would happen is we see how it work. It may not happen next year.
I guess, but yeah, if I, this I have no problem with. But if you just open it up to whatever, I think there can be some real issues there.
Thank you. I had a motion, I think, started.
If I might ask a question, does the DCP have a public statement to make at all on this position or proposal?
John, they're supposed to volunteer.
But they're pretty active lately.
Good evening. We do not have a formal letter, but we did reach out to the entire board and the members to receive feedback. And we'd love to respond more in a professional manner. And I just want to make sure we get everybody's opinion and consideration. And we'd love to submit that from the DCP.
Do you have a sense of their thinking?
Yeah, you know, we, I mean, we encourage development. We love the driving of traffic. But we feel how the ordinance is written right now, or the change, or the pilot, if you would. Definitely want to regulate where they can and cannot park. Cleanliness, absolutely. I mean, the bid, walking the street with the bid team and hearing the feedback from them and concerned businesses and residents definitely need to be addressed. But overall, would love for it to be a citywide and to give it a chance. So I think just making sure it's a formalized DCP letter would be appropriate.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move motion number one.
There's a second.
I'll second it. Can you summarize the motion? Which one?
Eric's going to do that first.
So I take it that motion one was the ordinance, you know, sort of approving the amendment of the ordinance. The initial reading you took sometime last month had a sunset clause at the end of the year. The amendment is just to move that sunset up to October 27th. So you're approving the amendment of that ordinance. That's motion number one, if I read you correctly.
Yes.
That motion requires a two-thirds majority of the commission. That's why we're parsing these out, is because there's
Commissioner Garrick.
Different majorities required, depending upon the nature of the motion.
So I'd like to amend the motion to add motion option number two, which we make this for the entire city of Fargo.
There's a second.
I'll second that, but I have a question.
Mr. Grinberg.
Is the original intent of the motion to allow them to park anywhere, or to follow the red lines as staff directed?
My intention is to follow the recommendations we see with the lines in place in the downtown zone that they've spelled identified.
And Nicole, is that a revised red line, or was that in the original ordinance?
I guess if you would like to revise that, I'd be open to that. We would just have to take that feedback from you.
So there was a revised red line that went further than the first?
Yeah, let me pull up the map here. I think what Randy was talking about was extending the Fourth Street red line to First Avenue and squaring this red line off. So if you can follow my cursor, First Avenue North, and then heading north on Fourth Street.
So John would accept that revised map?
That's what my intention.
Does a secondary agree with that?
Yeah, I have some comments, though. I would agree with having like a distance from the entrance to a restaurant. But to me, eliminating these whole streets, I just, I don't agree with that. So I might be contradicting myself, and I apologize. The other concern I have is, when they're on private lots, I think they have power and things like that. So the generators on the street, that's a concern for me, too. I think that takes away from the downtown character, just by, if these are parked on the street, they're all going to have to have generators, unless they have an agreement with the building that's right there or something like that. And I think that's one concern that I have, because I think we're going to get a lot of complaints if we have generators on all the complaints if we have generators on all these things.
Commissioner Garick.
So as far as the amendment that Commissioner Grinberg seconded, I hope that the other commissioners uphold that, too. I think it'd be a huge mistake to not to allow this in other parts of town. I'm telling you, if you park two up by the base, they're going to be full. If you put one down by Hornbacher's, it's going to be full. And I think it'll take the pressure off of exactly what you're talking about, having 40 generators running downtown on Broadway in front of Randy Thorson's businesses. So this is a natural way to alleviate that concern. That hurts nobody and helps other parts of the city and drive business there as well, not just to areas that are already packed with restaurants. I hope other commissioners are supportive of that.
Any comments on the amendment? Roll call, please.
Eric?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Kepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Any further discussion on the original motion? Roll call vote, please.
Original motion was amended.
As amended.
As amended, I'm sorry. Mr. Grinberg.
Just to clarify now, we're voting on restrictions on where they can locate in downtown and it's also citywide.
Correct. David, do you want to amend that?
Well, I would rather, it gets confusing if we amend it. So I'd rather just vote on this the way it is now. But can I just give you my editorial comment and then? I would much rather have a limit to the entrance to a restaurant, but not ban whole streets. That's just my, that's my thing. I think there's lots of these streets, there aren't any restaurants and we're not allowing a food truck on it. That doesn't make sense to me. I totally get Randy's concern about not having a food truck parked in front of my restaurant, but as far as the rest of the street, I don't agree with that. I don't know if that makes sense.
Mr. Strand.
I have a question about the intent of, now that the commission has passed the amendment saying it can be citywide, what does that mean, citywide? Is it in front of somebody's house? Is it in front of a park? Is it in front of a church? I mean, with the downtown topic, we at least vetted it. It was studied. We had consultants come in. We had advice. As I understand it, there was a lot of information and input and engagement in that process to define the downtown. Now, this group is asking us to say it isn't that anymore. It's all over the city. That's, all of a sudden, I'm against something I'm for.
John, they'd have to go to population area. Neighborhood would make no sense to do that. Commissioner Gary?
And there are already ordinances out there saying you can only park on the street between these hours. If you were running a generator, that'd be too loud for residential area. There's ordinances out there that are protecting people. And to his point, I won't be parking in front of my house where only, you know, the people who live by my house live. And on top of that, we're always talking about mixed uses of areas, how we want to maybe incorporate bars into neighborhoods and things like that. Wouldn't this be a good way to throw that out there and say, maybe that is something that would be good? So we always talk more mixed use and doing new things with neighborhoods and bringing communities together. I think it'd be great to have a block party with a food truck outside and an outdoor band, which is all illegal, by the way, right now. So that's my vision for Fargo, is to allow people to do what they want with the property that they have.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I seconded the motion because I do believe it should be a citywide because it's fair weather, it's just downtown. And so to recognize Commissioner Gary's motion, you know, I wanted at least to have that discussion. I'm going to vote no on any motion. I think we should delay it for 2019. That's just how I'm going to vote tonight. I just think there are too many unanswered questions. There's too many concerns. You know, it's July 16th. This week's a street fair. You can eat all you want downtown. And then the summer's going to be over and you're going to have time to figure this out so that everybody has, you know, a better feel for this. I just, you know, listening to everybody and all the media attention over the last two weeks, it just doesn't feel right.
Mr. Strand.
Commissioner Grinberg, I would suspect, suggest that might be a well-received motion right now to delay this until we've got all these bugs worked out a little more. I'm very concerned about us opening this up to downtown without any definitions at all what that means. I'm just really concerned. I'm okay with the initial proposal as a pilot for downtown as proposed with the amendments from Mr. Thorson's group for those corners. I'm open to trying that, but I think we've just killed it.
This spring, we had asked them to bring the motion on food trucks to this commission and we actually were pushing it May, June to have it here, Mr. Strand. And it's just taken forever to get it to this location where we're at now. It may be muddying waters to do it citywide, but again, it's a pilot that we're trying to put out there that's only going to be three months at best right now as we get it through this. So as Commissioner Gary commented, it probably won't go places that people wouldn't be allowed to do that. We do have some construction projects throughout the city. People probably might put a food truck next to a construction site. But we haven't allowed people to try it, so we have no idea what the pilot's going to take us. And that's really truly what it's been commissioned as, let's do a pilot, so. Any other comments?
Mayor, sorry to, so you didn't say this, but and I'm not certain how to address this issue, but, you know, your motion to amend was amending an ordinance and the ordinance has specific words. And the words currently as drafted said, you know, you're allowing this mobile food unit, you know, on the streets and so forth within an area within the central business district, you're making it citywide. So I'm sort of interpreting that to be a modification of the ordinance, you know, and a deletion of certain words and replacing it within, anywhere within the city.
The motion itself said to amend the proposed pilot program and ordinance to expand the program to all areas of the city. So it says it within that.
Yeah, so, but I am just saying that that requires a text change to the ordinance itself. I would probably just bring it back in two weeks for your final approval, but...
Yeah, we need two readings, right?
Well, we're waiving the requirement of the second reading, but... So, again, if you like, I can articulate sort of the precise amendment and you can approve that or turn it down as you wish. And then we could get it done today. That's all I'm getting at.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Grinberg that I think we should just hit the pause button and make sure we have everybody in the room, the restaurant owners and the truck vendors, and make sure we do this well and give it another shot next because it's the middle of the summer. But the ironic thing is this week, we're going to have streets full of trucks, food trucks, so that's a little bit funny. But I mean, we have to do this, you have to do it right. And there's no rush. There is no food truck emergency.
Is that a second to delay till 19?
We already have a motion on the floor. You can vote this first motion down.
I move we lay this on the table indefinitely.
We already have a motion and a second on your first motion. You have to vote on that.
No, you don't. The motion to table takes precedence.
There doesn't have to be a second for that.
No, I think it does take a second, but it doesn't...
There's a second to table.
The question that was really intriguing is indefinitely.
Indefinitely, until staff or others come back with a more formal proposal. I'll wait till I hear from them.
So that's your intent then?
Yeah, I don't want to put a deadline by next week or...
Take it literally then, you know?
It's laying it on the table.
Getting kind of hungry here and I hope...
Yeah, what minute and a half for a burger?
Two minutes until it gets served here, Tony. Just wait. So we have a motion to table. We have it seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to table? And it's indefinite until the staff brings back another proposal, which could be in 2019 or it could be in three weeks, but that's where it's...
Five years, six, seven years, whatever.
Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Kepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Eric?
No.
Mahoney?
No. Moving on to State Water Commission request for cost reimbursement for FM diversion flood project, cost amounting to $1,216,849. Ken Costin to explain.
This item is likely a little easier to vote on. If you wish that the city or the State Water Commission would pay you $1,216,849, we're asking for an approval of this reimbursement request and it's related to the Oxbo portion of the project.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Kepcorn?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Considering directing the staff to prepare four renewal plans for blocks in Roosevelt Neighborhood. Jim Gilmore to explain.
Thank you. To give you some background on this, the Roosevelt Neighborhood in 2009, we adopted, the city adopted a land use plan that identified that there was a high percentage of rental housing units west of T Lot, net portion of the neighborhood. As part of that, after that plan was adopted, the city instituted a new zoning district, university mixed use, and most of that property west of T Lot was converted to that zoning district. Since that time, in 2009, we've seen developers acquire property inconsistent with that DMU zoning, consistent with whatever our TIF policy at the time and consistent with the pilot policy that encouraged redevelopment. We've seen a number of projects developed in that area. One of the companies that has done one project, T Lofts, has also acquired approximately 30, over 30 properties over these particular four blocks. There is not at this time, specific, you know, plans or specific phasing for that. And so we're not in a position to actually create a renewal plan and create a development agreement because we don't have specific projects. There's no but-for analysis and no business plan yet. However, there are properties, get this to work tonight, maybe not. On these four different blocks, Roors has approached us about, is there a way that to kind of document the blighted conditions and at least potentially have these costs be eligible for future tax increment financing? And so this is with Eric Johnson about this, and really you can create a renewal plan that would encourage the removal of these vacant structures at this time, knowing that these developments may not take place for four, six, or eight years from now. Those costs would be documented. Renewal plans could state that it would be at least the intent of the city to consider providing some assistance in the future. And so the plan would simply go that far. Before any plan would be implemented, there would be a detailed plan put together about what the specific boundaries are, what the specific boundaries were or project is, the specific TIF district, a specific start date. And so what, essentially this plan would allow the developer and the city to work together to try to remove these vacant parcels, remove these vacant structures so that they're not a nuisance to the neighborhood in the short term. Some of these might be dangerous buildings. Some of them are simply in poor condition and the developers chosen not to rent them at this time. So the recommendation is to really find out if you want to have the city staff work with the developer to create some renewal plans that we would then bring back to you for your consideration. And the scope of the renewal plan would be to document the blight and say that at some point in the future, the city may be, decide to be a partner with the developer on, with tax increment financing to actually implement a renewal project. If you have any questions on the condition of these buildings, Bruce Terrillson from our inspections department is here. They're a little familiar with these projects. They have done some rental inspections in the past. I know they're representatives from the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, might want to make some comments as well as Roors' development. So if you have any questions for me.
Does anyone present a wish to speak to this issue?
Good afternoon or good evening, I guess. I'm Ken Eunixson. I live on 1202 8th Street. So also a member of the Neighborhood Association Roosevelt. We certainly support removing these blighted properties. They've been an eyesore for us and a constant issue for us for quite a while. But it does beg the question a little bit as far as, one, why did we allow these properties to get this point? I'm not necessarily pointing the finger at Roors in this case because I don't know the history of the property ownership, but clearly it's, they're all examples of the cycle of degradation that we've talked about a number of times when we talk about single-family ownership goes to landlords who rent to the point of degradation and abandonment, essentially. So that's an issue that we keep asking the city to address and to this date, it hasn't. The other question I think that we have is what's next? I think we need to remind you that not all of these properties fall into the UMU. There's four properties that fall in the Newman Center Block and there has been some discussion about redeveloping that block and basically clear-cutting it and putting up high rises. They do not follow, those properties do not follow the same rules as far as the UMU district when it comes to development. And we would expect that the city would adhere to those or we go through the proper process of changing them. So just raising those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. It's ironic that a couple of items ago, we talked about downzoning properties in the Island Park Neighborhood to kind of alleviate some problems with the surrounding single-family homes. And we're facing essentially the opposite problem here. These are called block renewal plans, yet we are still waiting for work to be done on our neighborhood plan that has been kind of in process for about a year and a half and hopefully in another year and a half, we'll see it. But at the same time we're doing that, we're being asked to support four-block renewal plans in absence of that bigger neighborhood plan. And that's a real big problem, I think, for us as a neighborhood. How can these individual blocks be targeted for demolition and redevelopment when we don't have the master plan? The passage of this renewal plan really would indicate, I think, a bias towards approving an unvetted and unapproved redevelopment plan in our neighborhood. So we don't support what's going on because we know what Roors wants to do is actually tear down an entire block of single-family housing and put up a high rise. And that's not according to the zoning that we face in that part of the neighborhood. We don't have as much of an argument in the UMU district, but I think what is happening is that Roors is trying to move the UMU into the core of Roosevelt Neighborhood. So that creates a lot of issues for us, especially those of us that live a block and a half away that are facing massive change to our neighborhood. And we have to ask the question, how did these houses become so blighted that now they have to be torn down and we need to ask for public money to do that? And I think that developers have a tendency to systematically degrade and not invest in properties, which leads to this problem. Now they're boarded up. And I've got, within a couple blocks either way, I've got houses boarded up. But this is a problem citywide. And I think that we really should have had prior community engagement, communication about this before now. That would have been really useful to the neighborhood. We haven't had that communication. Now we're talking about the demolition of 13 properties, which is going to leave a pretty vast scar in our neighborhood as well as, does that taint the process for what happens to those blocks going forward? Right now, it appears on the surface to be an understanding between one large developer in the city of Fargo. This has raised some questions in our Neighborhood Association because a lot of the unknowns far outweigh the knowns right now. I'm sure as a Neighborhood Association, I could say for our group that we appreciate the removal of bad properties and that's not what this is about. Rather, we don't want to see them boarded up, sitting empty, deteriorating or having a fire in them like we did earlier this summer. I also think as a neighborhood, we're concerned that there appears to be only one, targeted to one area of Fargo and not the city proper. And so I think if we have blighted conditions, buildings need to come down. This needs to be applied equally to the entire city and not focused on one neighborhood to our disadvantage. So I really think that tax increment financing should not be used to further cause harm to our neighborhood or give the appearance of pre-approval and city investment in a high-density project that citizens and residents do not want in our neighborhood. So I am asking you to table this, delay it. And even more than that, I would ask for moratorium for a six-month period to stop development until we can figure out the neighborhood plan for Roosevelt. the neighborhood plan for Roosevelt. And...
The difficulty is, actually, the Commission had asked the developer to come forth on these building properties, because it was concerned by the neighborhood, but the blight and the boarded-up buildings and such like that. This is just a preemptive, maybe, to get a TIF. They may not get a TIF, they may not qualify for a TIF, because they have to go through the usual things they have to do.
Right.
Don't argue that we should have a good discussion with Planning Department, what's going on in your neighborhood, but it's a question, what do you want to do with these properties? We had requests by many of the neighbors to tear them down. We can't do that as a city. So this is just a tool to try to see if we can get the developers to tear down the properties, so you don't have all these abandoned buildings within the neighborhood. And I think, Jim, if you want to have a discussion of what's going to go in the future, I think that that's got to be with planning, but this is more of a request by the city to try to address these neighborhood problems.
Would the Commission consider splitting the vote on this particular item, to consider UMU as one item, and residential neighborhood as a separate item?
You could well do that, Commissioner can suggest that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question, Jim, while you're still up there? So those houses, I drive by them, to me, if I lived in that neighborhood, it would be better to not have them there. Can I just ask your opinion?
I'm not disagreeing with you there. I, I do want to see the properties down. It's just that, does this taint the vote, or the process going forward, for what happens to those blocks in the future? And specifically, the areas that we know are not zoned for high-density.
So I get what you're saying, Jim, but I think we're pretty clear in saying, this does not get, does not make any further commitments. It just, this is just, we asked the developer to take them down, just because a lot of the neighbors are complaining about it, but I get what you're saying.
I think he wants the zoning issue. One is in the zoning that could do this, and the other is just residential that have to be requalified to get...
Well, to be clear, the UMU district has way different zoning standards than the rest of the neighborhood, and so, this is trying to mold, merge, merge both of those parcels of land into one sort of vote tonight. And I, I don't understand what the rush is to do this tonight. We were informed on Friday about this meeting tonight and this agenda item, and it's obviously been in the works for a lot longer than that, and we have had no communication about it.
Comment? Do we have other comment here, Jim?
I just, I did want to note that Ken and Jim are correct in that the block with the Newman Center is not zoned, university mixed-use. The future land use plan shows that as a mix of commercial, residential, there is a pending zoning change on that. So that block is, you know, it's sort of a plan for change, but less specific than the university mixed-use.
And how long have you been working on this, Jim? This rehab issue?
Again, the, the neighborhood plan was adopted in 2009. It identified certain areas suitable for redevelopment. That plan also identified that much of the neighborhood was really more suitable for preservation, which is why we've had our Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, our Housing Rehab Program. We've had sort of a different strategy outside of these areas that were identified.
But how long have you been working on this motion we have in front of us tonight?
You know, we had some discussion at the Tax Exempt Committee, as you know, a few weeks ago, and received the formal...
Two weeks ago. Just so the neighborhood know in the sense, you haven't been doing this for a couple months, this just started to come up a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, Eric and I visited whether or not, what was the proper process to this a few weeks ago, and so we brought this forward, really to see if we don't want to spend any more time on it.
Good evening, Larry Nygaard from Roarz Development. We're here at the request of the city tonight, and this is one solution that was proposed to us. We'd like to see those buildings torn down, we just want to preserve any rights we have going forward for the redevelopment. A question came up about how do these properties get in the condition that they are? Well, a lot of times, we buy them that way, and people have just used them and abused them, and, and there's really no repair on some of them. And that happens when you acquire larger parcels, you know, several, you know, you have to acquire several parcels to make up a project. It could take years. So, we, we welcome some vehicle for us to go ahead and remove some of this blight, and, and not destroy our ability to redevelop that site at a later date. So, if someone wants to delay it, we're fine with that, but...
Mr. Gurek.
Larry, if you didn't get a TIF, would you be able to, as a company, remove these buildings?
Well, I think what we're saying tonight is that we're going to remove them at our expense now. There's no guarantee, as I understand it from reading these, that we're going to get a TIF or a pilot in the UMU area.
But you are capable of doing that as a company?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Strand.
How many of these properties are empty now?
How many is on the list?
They're...
I think all thirteen of them are vacant, yeah.
So they're all uninhabitable?
Yeah, from, yeah, I believe that's correct, yep.
So there's codes on, there's, you, you have to deal with that regardless, relative to city code, they're not safe to live in.
Right.
And, and how long have they been uninhabitable?
You know, I heard from somebody from the city that one of the properties we bought, they, they discontinued water service in 2003. So, you know, that, that would be more than ten years, fifteen years.
And you're paying taxes in the meantime on them, as if they're full value?
Yep.
That's my only questions right here.
Mr. Grinberg.
Just a comment, and I appreciate the passion. Remember, Ken, last time you were up here, I was in New York City, and we triggered a special effort, and, and I would hope, Larry, as this moves forward, depending on what direction this goes, with how the project goes, that you'd invite the neighborhood to be part of that process.
Sure.
You know, that's one of the things we really worked hard with bringing people together, is that there was a seat at the table to really understand, you know, the sheer reality that some of these properties are, are going to be torn down. But, you know, if I could quote one of the members, "We just like gracious design." And so I think just having a seat at the table, at least, you know, where appropriate as this project moves forward, is that it's important to recognize the interests of, of the Neighborhood Association. As well as, one of the things Ken had mentioned, you know, we've taken a different approach at the city. And, you, you know, I don't think there's an overnight success with some of these properties as far as city code enforcement. And I've often said, we have a new sheriff in town, it's Mr. Terrillson, and he works within the auspices of city ordinance, of state law, and private property rights, but we're much more proactive now dealing with these things. And we're not going to see results for some time, because it takes years for some of these properties to be run down like they are with the conditions that you have with these properties. So, you know, I just wanted to make that reference, that, you know, we are listening, in my opinion, here, and, but there's no silver bullet's going to fix, you know, everything overnight, it's just going to be working together. And that's one of the things I wanted to stress, is that, you know, the folks are passionate about their neighborhoods, we need to be, you know, allowing them the opportunity to be part of it wherever appropriate, as these things move forward, so that their voices are heard, and we all better from the process.
I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Gurek.
And Larry, I want to say publicly that there are a lot of people against that pony land development that you guys did, and after you had your open house, and you brought people in, and things like that, almost everyone I talked to there was happy with the way it all turned out, and how you, how you worked with that community. So I have no doubt that Roarz will continue to do that going forward. My, my point of, point of questioning was, I know you guys will do a good job here, I just don't think you need us to help you pay for those, those removals. And I think to John's point, it's not anyone else's responsibility, but the people who own that building, to either fix them up and make them to code, or to get rid of them. So that was my point.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. Commissioner Grinberg mentioned the neighborhood study for the Roosevelt Neighborhood, and that's, that's something that's coming, that's, we're trying to address the concerns of the neighborhood. We've had similar discussions in community development about neighborhoods at risk. We, you know, when Mr. Grand Strand joined our Planning Department, it was to study specifically the neighborhood development. Earlier, in this meeting, we acknowledged $2 million from the NRI program to help rehab homes. This is where that money should be going. It should have been going there all along. But I don't know that the intention is to buy these properties to save them at all, except for to have, and I understand you have a longer-term vision to redevelop, like the St. John's Newman Center block, and, which isn't UMU, it isn't university zoned, it is a different issue than, than the neighborhood south of the university, but this is, I just, I just am perplexed about, how do we help these neighborhoods that are at risk, that are just, it's non-stop? And we're, we're feeding into this deterioration, and allowing the blight, and allowing the gaps, and allowing the clearing of blocks, and then the only answer that can come isn't more single-family homes. And we already have fewer numbers of single-family home permits coming, we already have a record-high number of people in apartments, we have a, not a very good picture for vacancies in apartments. I just don't get where we're going with this. I wish this would have come through community development. So our group that's charged with some of these topics could address them, but it didn't. I don't know if it's coordinated or correlated to the Planning Department's desire for a neighborhood study specifically for the Roosevelt Neighborhood, but this is absent all of that desire for a master plan or a bigger view, and, and yet, we might, and, and I agree with Commissioner Gurek, that I don't know that the public, I guess if we're going to have a TIF for addressing blighted properties, why don't we do it across the city? Why just the Roosevelt Neighborhood? We're, we're putting more nails, nails in the coffin of that neighborhood. And I've, and I've heard a prominent member of our Planning Commission, and I've mentioned this before, say, "We've lost that neighborhood." I'm not so sure we haven't lost it. And/or if we have the political will to try to save and salvage what's left with the spirit and intent of the past, to save what neighbors, single-family homes we can, to preserve the neighborhoods, we've, the, the allowance of the university mixed-use zoning was a huge sacrifice for the neighborhoods, neighborhood folks there, but they gave in and yielded to that, thinking, well, at least, at least direct your growth to that area. Well, we're, like, we're combining this into one motion, as they say. We're already all, you know, I just, I just, I'm really concerned about, and I respect growth and development, and I'm not anti-growth, and I'm not anti-development, but I'm pro-people. And pro-neighborhoods. And pro-history. And, and I don't see this place we're in as a good one, any way we look at it. Frankly, we got buildings that are deteriorated and rundown, and, 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 and we have disinvestment going on, and we're going to force the investment coming by accelerating the disinvestment. I just don't get it.
Commissioner Strand, they were asked to come up with a plan to get rid of the blight, that's basically the problem, they're going to pay for it themselves, but if they went for a TIF or a pilot, they would get credit for that work. So that's really what this, this ordinance is about. The idea of how the neighborhood should be is a separate discussion, that should be held with the neighbors, and that should be helpful with Planning Department to try to redefine that. The problem is, you don't have anybody investing, they could sell this house to somebody, nobody's investing to rebuild a single-family home. So the problem you have, unless your community, community development has money to help that out, that doesn't work right now. So I mean, it's a great discussion to have. All this is trying to do is get rid of the blight, they were asked to come up with an ordinance that took care of that. The other plan that the neighbors are asking is, what is the future plan's going to be in this area, and that hasn't been defined as yet. So, we kind of know in the one area, we think something might come in there, and that's been kind of touted right now. But the request was really, if you want us to get rid of blight, we get, we get credit for it, if we go further with some type of project. That's the question at hand. If you want to get rid of blight another way, you have to come up with another idea.
I have an idea, let's, let's build some school homes on these lots. Let's move some affordable housing onto these lots. We're desperate for lots to put affordable housing on, in existing neighborhoods, where there's already infrastructure in place. But I don't know that that's an option, that somebody can go and get one of these lots, ever, down the road, and put a single-family home on it. I'd like to see that it was. If we were going that direction of clearing these properties out, to improve these neighborhoods by getting rid of the blight, and, and making available, available to the public lots to develop on, inside, in, inner cities, that people want to move to, and we have an NRI program to help, or other investment program, I mean, that's what we should do, but we're not. We're going to take these buildings down and wait until the big project comes. It isn't an option, I don't see, to have single-family homes on these lots that are, currently have been forever, single-family homes. And we're losing single-family homes. We have a problem going on in this community, we don't have a, we, we're trying to find affordable housing. Somehow, we have to all connect these dots.
Give us a project, John.
Come to the Community Development and tell us you have thirteen lots available? We'd love to work with you.
Any other discussion? I want to cut off discussion, we went on this long enough, Ken.
One minor point.
Okay.
Okay. So, just in regards to cycle of degradation, the narrative is usually that these things are over a period of years, and that's not always the case. We can give you examples, I can't necessarily speak to these thirteen properties, but we can give you examples, very recently, of landlords purchasing properties and letting them fall into disrepair. So, this is not something that is happening over decades. This is sometimes happening over six months to a year. So, just, so you keep that in the back of your mind, as we talk about this going forward.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move the recommended motion that includes involvement of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I move we divide the question, and have the UMU section voted on separately from the residential homes in the St. John's block.
Is there a second?
Do I need to be seconded?
It does.
Second.
So you'd like to divide the question or the motion, excuse me, you'd like to divide the motion, we'll vote on that first, any discussion on that? And that was requested by the neighborhood, so. Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Now we'll go back to the original motion, and which neighborhood do you want it to vote on first?
Jim, could you help us with that?
The three blocks and the university mixed-use district are those, and the Beardsley's addition, and so maybe that's the way to describe those three, the other being the block with the Newman Center.
You understand it, then?
Yes. To include involvement with the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association.
Which one are we doing?
So which one are we doing first?
Guess that's up to you, but this one, do the three, and Beardsley's first.
Yep.
The UMU first.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
So Tony made the motion, and Dave seconded. And I seconded.
Yep, and then it was separated. And then it was separated. That counts, you're right. It's these two here.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
No.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Second part of the motion. Jim?
Second part would be the development of that renewal plan for the block that includes the Newman Center, bordered on university, from 12th, from 12th on the north to 11th on the south.
Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
No.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Moving on, we have our recommendations for the Human Relations Commission. Commissioner Strand, you want to talk about them?
I, I would, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, we, I think, we had a great selection of, of candidates for the Human Relations Commission, and, and interviewed maybe six or seven of them, folks that had applied. We have a whole bunch on the bench that want to get involved. Matura Alir is in the audience, would you stand, Matura? Matura just ran for school board in Fargo Schools, and was a great contender, and is very involved in the community. He's one of the recommended folks. And Hamida, I don't know if Hamida's here, but you might know her, she's very engaged in the community, but some really terrific nominations. And thank you for appointing them, Mayor.
Do you have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll take a five-minute break and come back to item 32.
I think this might be real long. There should be a rule about not having long meetings when it's nice, though.
Call the meeting back to order. Item 32, consider owner-supplied extra items and funding sources related to City Hall project. City Administrator Bruce Garb and his team do explain.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, this item is related to the construction of City Hall, and some owner-supplied items that were not included in the bidding documents, nor were they included in the funding plan for City Hall. As you also know, City Hall was actually bid twice. The first design bid in March of 2015, low bids came in at $31,150,000, which was over the project estimate by about $4.6 million. So the City Commission rejected those bids and approved a redesign and rebid of City Hall. The bid documents for the redesigned City Hall were put out on the street with the same scope that the original bid was. Obviously, for the purposes of comparis and compare... So the City Commission rejected those bids and approved a redesign and rebid of City Hall. The bid documents for the redesigned City Hall were put out on the street with the same scope that the original bid was. Obviously, for the purposes of comparison, compare the first bid and second bid and see if any progress was made in trying to reduce costs. We're now nearing the end of the construction project, and we're recently provided with cost estimates for owner-supplied items associated with City Hall. Again, these are items that were not included in either the first or second bid of City Hall. And when the question was asked, how were these things intended to be funded back in 2015, at the time of the first bid, the plan apparently was to utilize state aid revenue as a separate funding source to pay for those items outside the City Hall construction funding plan. Unfortunately, since that time, the state aid revenue climate has changed, and that source of funding today isn't as robust as it was and is inadequate to accomplish that. So other potential funding options had to be looked at, considered. The owner-supplied extra items have been categorized under two basic headings, one being City Hall Public Broadcast. And in a moment, I would like to have Ron Gronenberg, our IS Director, and Trent Slider with ABI Systems come up and speak to that just briefly. That cost estimate, $1,215,000, a very significant number. The second category of items is called ancillary fit-up of City Hall, also very significant number, just over $900,000. And so, in a moment, I would like to have Greg Schuldberger, our Communications and Public Affairs Manager, and Terry Stroh, the Project Architect, come up and talk about that. And then, because these are such significant numbers, it's not easy to find ways to pay for these types of things. We all know that. This item was taken to the Cities Finance Committee a week ago. Two options for funding these things were considered. Because the public broadcast work relates directly to broadcasting, the idea was to, or a possibility was to utilize broadcasting-related franchise fees to pay for those. The second one, more challenging, the ancillary fit-up, finding a funding source available to pay for those. The idea that was thrown out in front of the Finance Committee was to potentially utilize the cost savings on the healthcare premiums that we realized as of January 1st of 2018. And so, the Finance Committee recommended that bring that forward to the City Commission. We're here tonight. At the end of all this, I'd like to have Kent just close a little bit about the funding plan. What was the idea back when these things were not included in the original bid, and what about the plan of funding today? So with that, Ron and Trent, if you could come up, I would like to first just very briefly touch on the public broadcast items, if you would, and we've got just a couple of slides associated with each of these categories for you.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you probably know, our franchise agreement with Cable One and our franchise agreement with Midcontinent, both allow us to broadcast PEG channels on their systems. And we currently broadcast a government channel, and we broadcast a public and education channel. So we have two channels. We operate those in standard definition, which is back from the old CRT-TV days, and this system would move us into the high-definition area. In addition, the system would add closed caption capabilities to the system. This is what the chamber looks like currently, or as of a day ago. And you can see it's still under construction. There'd be video screens to the right and left of the center in the back there. That'll be behind the DS. So the costs include moving everything to high-definition for two channels on the PEG system, plus the audio and video systems inside the room. In addition to basically the capabilities we have right now, we are also looking at adding video conferencing so that when you're calling in, and you're currently audio-conferencing, you'd be able to video-conference and be able to see what's going on. So Trent has been integral in defining what the capabilities are and how the equipment works together and things like that from ABI.
Good evening. My name's Trent Slider. I've been in the broadcast world for 30 years now. Built production facilities across the country from east coast to west coast. And most recently, I've done, this will be actually the fourth city council-designed chambers in about as many years. The system we put together here is commensurate to the needs of this, you know, this location, this metropolitan area. We're not necessarily, I like to stay off the bleeding edge. It's painful for everybody. Stay more on the cutting edge of things. So instead of having a square, standard image going out to your constituents, you are going to have a widescreen. Let's be real, everybody has widescreens at home now, right? So at least we're going to be widescreen, HD. We're going to have closed captioning capability for the live meetings, so on the fly, the people at home will be able to see the captions. But we are putting in the infrastructure so that in five, six, 10 years, when it becomes cost-effective to move to 4K, which you may have heard or not heard, that it'll be an easy transition, mostly software, and not have to do any forelifts. So the number-one consideration in putting this system together was reliability and rock-solid operation, and we hope that what we're putting in now will serve you for seven to 10 years before you have to do a major overhaul.
Questions, are any Commissioners on that?
Can I ask a question? So how much of the stuff that we currently have is transferable, or is that all non-transferable?
eBay is your friend.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ron, at one time, you said the reason you did not bid this out originally was because of the technology?
So there, yeah, so if we had included this in the construction bid, we would be buying equipment that was standard-of-the-art two years ago, and we'd be installing that right now. And so we would be putting in, and there's been huge changes in technology over the last two years. There'll probably be huge changes in the next two years, too, with everything that's going on. But yeah, if we had done it with the design, nobody would be happy with the system.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more? So the new control room at the Fargo Dome where they have all that stuff, are we going to have something similar to that, like where there's going to be a control area with, just from my own vision, can you explain that?
So the control room at Fargo Dome, the one on the north side in the second level, is separate from the field and things like that. This is inside the room.
So it'll be similar to as it is now? So it'd be inside?
Similar, except it's in a, it's in a separate room?
Okay.
With a glass in front of it. You'll be able to see the camera operator, and at your desks, you'll have some one-way communication that the camera operator will be able to text you some information on your screen. But it'll be, other than the chair, nobody will have direct communication with the camera operator that you could now talk to, but...
Thank you.
They'll be there.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. I'm relieved to see us going the direction of closed captioning, but will this be for all committee meetings and all board meetings, and, or how far-reaching will that go?
So that'll probably become a cost issue. The contract with closed captioning allows us a certain amount of time, and so if we exceed that, then there will be more expenses. So the capability is really going to be driven by desire, I guess, because there's an expense associated with that. So we're getting a base amount of minutes. I think it's about 60 minutes of time every week, or something like that. I don't remember exactly, but there's a base amount of time, and then if we exceed that, there'll be an additional cost. So...
Okay. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you, Ron. This ancillary fit-up work, almost a bit more challenging to explain and fund. So at this point, I'd like to ask the Assistant of Greg Schuldberger and Terry Stroh to come up and talk about these, and you can see there's a screen, a slide up on the screen for your reference.
Good evening, members of the Commission. So we're just going to kind of go through this overall. If there's individual questions on each piece, we're definitely happy to answer that. So in that first category, in the IT world, obviously, you know, we have a lot of needs in that facility. So that ranges from security cameras, controls on our accesses, switches, telephones, et cetera. That pretty much is overall what's in that line item fee of $355,000 and change. That next item, for different kind of pieces that we need to have in the offices, appliances, trash cans, podiums, storage units, those kind of things. I think at this point, I really want to say that these numbers and the work that you have included on this is really the work of the 202 employees that we're going to be having, working, actually, when we're all moved in. We really worked with each of them to try and look at what are their needs in their existing space? What are the hopes that what we can do in the new space? And what are any pieces of equipment that we can be using in the existing facility that we can be bringing along with us? So what these numbers really contain are the pieces of equipment that either are going to be moved or that we don't have currently in place that we would need to have. But I do think it's important for you to also note that. The next line item, miscellaneous overall costs, those are the actual fees. There's a lot of fees included in there. So the actual cost for any equipment, anything that we use in the offices, anything we have to hold on to, to be taking that from the existing offices into our new facility, is included in there. Any of the outside signage that you see outside the offices, such as this, they're obviously not this large, but just to kind of get you an example, you know, in a facility this large, we obviously need to have a lot of these, so that's included in there. Window treatments as well. We're going to be covering 207 windows. Is the question, does that mean that we're going to be covering all the windows? No, it does not. Really, these are the only, only windows that are in exact areas where people are working, where depending on if they're on the east side early in the morning, and they want to close those off for a certain number of hours. Those are the only windows that we are planning on doing. When you lock down the long hallways and the long, big, tall windows, we're not placing anything on those. City Hall commissioning, this is a topic I'm going to turn over to Terry for him to kind of go through what this process is.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Commissioning has been something that has probably been really prevalent in the last four to five years. We've been doing a lot of it in higher education, they're doing more of it in schools now, and actually, the new 2015 code, which we're not under in this particular building, is a requirement now to commission billing. Basically, what that is, is having a separate firm come in and test pieces of equipment to determine if they're performing the way the design was intended. And there's many levels you can take this to. They've actually found that in the past, you know, just the simple, in a motor, you can actually cross wires and have the fan going the wrong direction by doing that. And there have been years going on where people have had equipment not working correctly. They basically, and that's why it's now a code requirement. We've been doing it at NDSU for quite some time now, probably at least three or four years. And it's just proven to actually pay for itself over the first two to three years of the building. Not that you have a bad contractor or anything like that, it's just that people can make mistakes, and it's more somebody coming behind them and taking a look at samples of stuff to see that it was running the way it's supposed to, it's performing the way it's supposed to, it's putting out the kind of airflow it's supposed to, those kind of things, and then eventually making the building more efficient. And so they come up with a report at the end, and then basically, our contractor would adjust those things to their standards.
And then overall, just overall...
Grinberg has a question?
So what are we paying of $339,451? How much is commissioning?
I think it was $24,200. And the other thing with these numbers, just to kind of point out, is when this whole project began, there were a couple of goals in mind. One, when we heard people's complaints about coming to City Hall, and they were going to have meetings, there wasn't anywhere to have meeting rooms. Current commission room for meeting rooms has a total of six. In our new City Hall, we're going to have 22. So a lot of the costs that you see to be putting different options in those, in those conference rooms, we're not going all out on the conference rooms, but when you're going up that many of numbers, there is a certain number of technology we need to have in those rooms. And number two, to be putting everything into those rooms that you can only add in now, and if we want to add the different features in, we can later, but to be having the infrastructure included in that.
And then Mayor and Commission, if I could, just to close this portion down and turn it over to the Commission for Comment, I ask Kent to step up. The idea that we would go out for bid twice in a situation like this and not have these specific items as part of either funding plan, there was a strategy back in late 2014, and I just wanted Kent to talk about that a little bit. That strategy that was planned on being utilized in 2014 isn't available today, so I'd also like him to speak about the plan of financing discussed at the Finance Committee a week ago. Kent?
Thank you, Bruce. With regard to the discussion with, around sales tax, or state aid, excuse me, that's derived from sales tax, you're all aware of the significant spike that happened several years ago, and it was a fairly sustainable growth in that aid category. If you flashback to when we did the health building, that was about the time when we did, bought this summer building and rehabbed it into that, that was about, all in, about a $12 million project. Well, we were looking at that and trying to discern, okay, is this trend sustainable or not? Mr. Zaveral and myself had an extensive discussion about that, wanting to try to protect the integrity of the budget process, and we discerned that it wasn't. So we would program those resources into capital projects as we could afford them as we went. And even to take a step further, that we didn't anticipate perhaps it would last to that great extent, we also borrowed a note on part of that construction package. So my point in going through that is, that was a fairly sustained budget trend. It changed quickly, and it started to degrade itself. So, long story short, we would have programmed those monies out of the budget through that normal process anyway. So now this is at the end of the process, and if you recall, as we get into how this impacts the budget, last year, just shortly after we approved the budget for 2018, we took bids on the health insurance package in November, and as a result of that bid, there was a 34% decrease in our health insurance allowance. That was a huge cost savings, okay? And that accrues to the general fund. So what we're advocating is to appropriate some of, or actually all of that savings to pay for at least the ancillary fit-up, and to use the franchise fees as a way to pay for the broadcast system. So with the savings you had and the amount, the 2.1 they were asking to appropriate now, you'd be appropriating slightly more than the savings that are accrued in the budget. So I just wanted you to understand what we're asking you to do and where that money came from. Overall, within the budget, it's almost a push. We're a little bit light on funding, so you'd be adding supplemental funding to get this accomplished. So I just ask if there's any questions. Again, your finance team and your administrators have been very accurate in our ability to predict revenues on a near term, I mean, year-over-year during the budget process. That has worked out well, and we just have to make those decisions as we go, in some cases, when our revenues turn on us. And especially during this budget session, you'll see in the next two or three weeks, as the mayor unfolds his budget, you'll see some of those changes in those revenue lines and what we're doing to try to balance the scorecard, if you will. So be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Bruce, you're on again, or did you have one?
Yes, well, no, Bruce can finish.
Well, that concludes the presentation. I anticipate that the Commissioners will have comments on this, and so we'd like to, at this point, open it up.
Commissioner Garrick?
Or questions to any of the team members that we've assembled?
Here we are again. So when Centennial Hall went down for $720,000, oh, we didn't budget for that, sorry. It won't happen again. Then we had FFFNE come up. They wanted $1.7 million. Sorry, we just didn't, we didn't think about that. That's going to be added on top of the cost. That's going to be added on top of the cost. Okay, don't let that happen again. Nope, sorry, if we didn't add into the cost of the AV equipment for City Hall, that wasn't part of the bid. Oh, sorry about that. And we're expected just to do it again. And now we're at a point where 20% higher cost for City Hall than what we were told the people. We had a $31.5 million bid that was far too high. How dare we have it that high? Then we go back, and we have a $22.5 million bid. Everyone's happy. We pat ourselves on the back, we move forward. But it appears to me now, there's a pattern, and we clearly removed things out of that bid in order to make it look better to the people of Fargo. We have over $5.3 million that just appeared throughout this process. How do you forget to demolish Centennial Hall? That's part of the bid. That needs to be part of the conversation. How do you forget you need doorknobs and seats in your office building? You don't. It's part of the problem. It wasn't part of the bid for a reason. And now how do you forget you need microphones at the Commission Chamber and equipment to broadcast? You don't. You did that on purpose. So this is a big deal. We're now 19% over what we told people of Fargo this was going to be, and we're expected to not make a big deal out of it. And it's not something that we should be concerned about. And then to say we can pay for it, fine, we can find money places, that's fine. We can always find money. Apparently, we can always find money to spend more money, but we can never find money to reduce your taxes. That's a travesty. $13.5 million out of special assessments, boy, the city's going to sink. How would you ever recover from that? $5.5 million more for City Hall, no problem, we'll find the money somewhere, not a big deal. So I'm livid over this. I'm voting no, because the people of Fargo deserve better. We should have been told about this years ago. No, we shouldn't have bought equipment years ago. We should have had a placeholder in place saying it'll probably be between $1 and $3 million. We'll be ready for $3. And to say state funding will cover it is an absurd way to budget. State funding should never be your first course. It should be a backup. So I'm angry about this. I have a cell phone that costs $200. I'll walk around for $2 million for the next 20 years and take a picture of the Commission Chamber while y'all want to have your meetings. That's great. I can get on Facebook, YouTube, I can broadcast across the world on this thing. But we're going to spend $2 million for this one room. I don't like it. We should all vote no, back to the drawing board. And I can't believe this is happening again, and we're all just going to vote yes on it.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Peppern.
Bruce, I have a question. So like we were talking about with this fit up for the City Hall, if we would have approved the higher number for City Hall when we had the original number, would these numbers have been showing up then after that? I guess that's my concern, that if we would have approved the original cost for City Hall, imagine what the final cost would have been now. I mean, it would have been $40 million. Anyway, so can you talk a little bit about that?
None of what you're seeing tonight was part of either bid package. And I think that's Commissioner Garrick's point, is why not? Why wasn't there at least a placeholder there? But no. Had the first City Hall bid passed three to two, same thing would be being discussed right now, yeah.
So that's concerning to me, that the original bid was a lot higher than this, but then we would have had all these numbers on top of that. And I think it would have been a $40, $45 million City Hall, and so, I don't know. I agree with Tony with what he talks about there. But on the flip side, we have a building now, and we want to, we don't want to move this stuff into our new building. And the closed captioning, that's a legitimate thing that I think all of us would be in favor of voting for. So it's not an easy vote, without a doubt. But on the flip side, this is going to have to last us for a long time, and we want it to be done well. Thank you.
Mr. Greenberg.
There's an old saying, it is what it is. Commissioner Strand and I came part of this commission, and these decisions are already made, but Commissioner Garrick's point, you know, in the first round, there was evident that there wasn't a complete budget for this. You know, it's easy to look back, you know, and say, you know, it is what it is. We got to finish the project. And I don't like it. I would have never voted for this if I was on the commission before 2016 without an entire budget. And I frankly don't care about equipment that was three years old. You can still have a placeholder and a dollar amount. So it is what it is. And, you know, we got to move into a City Hall at work, so I don't like it.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve. If I can add one thing. Tony, just imagine if we would have gone ahead with the original vote and then what the number would be now. What we should do is add that number to all this, and it would be astounding. So anyway, and I'm not trying to minimize your points, but we got to do this, and I'm so thankful, and it was painful. You guys weren't here. It was painful, and we were vilified for that a little bit. But anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Did you second it, Dave?
I made the motion, I can't second it.
Tony, well, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't second it yet, just answered.
Who seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, Strandet, okay. Any other discussion? John Strand.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
I thought you were thinking.
You know, hindsight's so terrific. You know, it's always nice to look back and see what we see in retrospect. And yeah, it would have been prudent to have earmarked these funds in anticipated expenditures. It would have been prudent. But you can't have an empty building either, you know? I mean, so we're kind of, I can see both sides of this. However, I'm not going to throw staff under the bus, nor am I going to throw previous Commissioners under the bus. Our job is to make decisions right. And it's, we can make the right decision and the wrong decision. Our job right now is to make this right. We're fortunate. We have some cushion to fund these items. I wish we were spending $2 million to buy lots in town for houses, but that'll be my next proposal. But I'm celebrating the moment where we get into this new technology, this new building. We've learned, we're delivering the people a product and a service. We have 202 employees that will be delivering public services out of there. It's not all perfect, but we know we're going into a new city commission. We know we're going to need to fit it up. We know we're going to need to have a technology. The buck lands on our desks, and I'm, say, finish the project. I wouldn't imagine not finishing it.
Commissioner Garrick.
That's the problem, though. We've said that numerous times. With the Roco parking ramp, I remember the conversation we had, and to Tony Greenberg's point, he said something similar, like, well, you got to finish the project. That was 7.5% over. The Cass County Public Health Building was 10% over. The fire hall was 10.5% over. The water treatment plant, in fairness, we added West Fargo to that project, so it's not all their fault, but it's 4% over. City Hall, it says 5.3%. No, it's 19% over. It's 19% higher than what we told the people of Fargo. So we're getting, if we're the people in charge here, we're not either knocking the info or making bad decisions. And I hope the people of Fargo realize that. So if it's the fact that we're not getting good information, then you have to talk about staff. There's something going on. We're not being told something. So when I was pulled into the office last week, and he said, hey, we need $2 million for, you know, AV equipment, that's the first I'd heard of that. And I'm supposed to be up here making decisions. So you have, there is someone to blame. We have to have the courage to say that. If I didn't have that information, then who is to blame? And we, as decision makers, have to have that conversation.
Just a clarification for the public on the building project table. It basically says City Hall went up 5.31%. So just on the same table that Commissioner Garrick read, I just want to make that verified. I think in the past, what we've seen is Bruce Scrub and Utilities and Water has done an excellent job at forecasting basically the cost of projects and where we're going. I think this is one project in which was difficult to get a vote to get City Hall built. A lot of costs were not put in there. We discovered that as we went. I think Bruce Scrub was surprised when, three weeks ago, he said, what are the all costs that are left here? And we found out how high it was and didn't know that it wasn't in the budget. I think what we've learned from this, from all the Commissioners, is going forward, any building project will have a contingency fund, will have an estimate of where it might be, so we know all in what the costs are. Commissioner Greenberg could talk about how they do that in the state, and it works out fairly well. You know where things are going to come and about where they're going to sit. I think we have a commitment by the finance team to do that and push that forward, going forward on all our projects that we have. Fortunately, we don't have another City Hall, but we will have other building projects that we're going to build. I want to thank the team for working real hard, because what we didn't talk about is how we cut costs. We didn't talk about Greg hammering and hammering to get prices down, how furnishings got knocked down by $400, $500,000. And we worked real hard as a team to bring this back down to reality. And yeah, I think it is what it is, Tony, and we just got to get it done, is what we need to do. So any other comments, and otherwise, I'll call roll call. Roll call.
Peppern.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
No.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Next item, discussion regarding special events in Fargo. Commissioner John Strand asked this discussion to come up.
No, it was Commissioner Garrick.
I did.
John Strand.
Number 20.
No, no, 33.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Special events, I'm sorry, I said it too fast.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong. Well, we've had a lot of community dialogue about a presidential, a presidential nature campaign coming to town, and who pays for that? And I'm not so sure the context of history of, you know, since I've been here, we've seen Bill Clinton come to town, we've seen President Trump come to town, we've seen Bernie Sanders come to town just in the last few short years. If any of us have campaign events, but people all over the board, like, whose responsibility is this, to pay for this? And I would just like to know, what is our practice and our policy, so that when we say to folks, we're not paying for it, this is the cost of business? So we have a context to put it in relative to the discussion about Trump's visit for campaign, the campaign of Kevin Kramer.
Well, a couple of things need to be clarified. A lot of people asked why we didn't have the Fargo Dome. The Fargo Dome was never contacted, so we have no idea. That was a Republican chairperson's decision, as far as that goes. We know the 20,000 tickets were mailed out, the place only holds 6,000. So that was not our doing. Second item is that when we published in the forum what the costs are, I think, Joe, if we talked about police force, we had overtime costs, but we have to bring the guys on to work every day. So the 30,000 is standard cost for the day, and the other part is overtime. So the really cost for the city theoretically, if you just bore down overtime costs, are roughly $10,000, if I take police, fire, and public works. Are you a good comment to it, Joe?
Sure. Joe Anderson, Fargo Police. I can only speak for, obviously, for the police department. We adjusted hours to accommodate for President Trump's visit, where we only accrued roughly $1,200 in overtime. Otherwise, we accrued roughly 835 hours in regular time, which was time that we would have paid regardless of that event. And I think that caused some confusion in that forum article, as far as whether or not we would have paid that time or not.
And you were really responsible for protection of the people. The Secret Service protects the president, but the role of our police department is to keep people safe at that event.
That is correct, Mayor. We were responsible.
It's no different than game day, you do the same thing. So we don't charge anybody, John, Commissioner Strand, we don't charge anybody that's come to town. I don't know if the Commission wants to consider something else, but that's just part of the duty we have of our police force and fire and public work.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick, so Joe, like, tailgating, I see the police officers there, does the dome pay for them when there's extra staff there, or is that the same thing that's kind of included in the day?
There's a special detail that is put out, so the dome and NDSU pays for part of that detail.
So to me, here's my philosophy. If the president comes here, that's on us. But if it's a campaign, and that's what this was, then I think that they should be, like the Fargo Dome, paying for part of the detail. That's just my opinion. I think if the president is here on an official visit, like for, hopefully, the diversion or for some thing, then that's separate. But when it's a, it was the Trump campaign, and so to me, they should be compensating. Or we should at least say, here's what the bill is. They might not pay us, but that's my opinion. I don't know if that makes sense to anybody else.
Mr. Strand.
It makes sense, perfect sense to me. If it's a campaign, that the campaign should bear the responsibility of the costs for campaign activities. And, you know, you hear of lots of cities and entities that might bill a campaign and never get paid anyway. But I just wanted to know, do we have a policy? Do we have a practice that's established? Do we have a precedent, looking back, for these types of activities? My sense is, but on the other hand, I'd be open to having a policy in place if it's a campaign. Because I think there's a difference between an appearance of a public official versus an appearance of somebody campaigning for somebody.
Mr. Chairman, but I think that we do have the similarity of the football game, where there's extra time for the police staff, and they're compensated for that. Anyway, I think it's a good discussion thing, but ESPN, I guess, I don't know how that, I don't know if they compensated anybody for anything. I think that was all on us, but.
Control the crowd. Mr. Greenberg.
Way in.
You got to weigh in.
I think we have more important things to discuss. If the President of the United States wants to come here, whatever his agenda is, let him come and not worry about it. That's the president. He's the President of the United States. Just my humble opinion.
Mr. Garrick.
I've now got to meet three presidents. So that was very cool.
You got DSC as Lumbo, too.
That was very cool.
Then I would ask that our mayor be invited to these events down the road when they show up to town, as a representative of the city. If we're going to have officials. I'm saying that somewhat tongue in cheek, but we had a vice president come to town not long ago, where the mayor wasn't invited till the last second anecdote, after the fact. And, you know, if you're going to be receiving people on behalf of a city, if you're going to have elected officials, and you're going to have the governor and have the mayor there too, saying, on behalf of Fargo, welcome to our great city. So let's be fair across the boards, if that's the case, and not be political in those types of actions, too.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that statement wholeheartedly. And who knows who the next president will be.
Where do you want to go with it, John? Do you want to have policy discussed, or Bruce Buck at it with administrative team, or?
I'm more than anything, just wanted to get a sense of a transparent discussion publicly about where are we? Because people have asked, and we've had it reported on, and we haven't discussed it. And I wanted to know, and I'm not seeing any action that I'm clamoring to advocate for, but I'm glad to know the context of it. And thank you all for bearing with me on that.
We'll go to item 20 then. Agreement with Howard and Barbara Gensler. Troy Hall to explain. I think this is more, I think when I talked to you, Tony, you thought you wanted to pull this so people understand specials and deferrals a bit.
Yeah, I don't even think, I want Troy to come up here. I think that the reason I pulled this was because on page seven, section or paragraph X, sub-paragraph two, there is a blurb in there saying that all subsequent taxes, whether it be real estate taxes or special assessments, will be carried on by the city. So that's basically a deferment, if I'm reading that correctly. So I just wanted really the public to understand, with special assessments, there is a certain amount that we defer in total. And I want, actually, Kent, if you could, if you're still here, to speak to more, I'm sorry, you came up, but more so, talk about what happens with these deferments, and who pays them, and for how long, and how does that all work? I think it's one more discussion that we're going to have at whatever task force we're going to have regarding special assessments. And this is, I think this is an important part of it, being that there is $21 million currently being deferred by the city of Fargo for special assessments.
Say, do you want me to go through why this project at all, or?
I think it's fine, and I'm likely will vote for it.
I think you have to explain to the public, the city's part of what's in the project, so they understand what you did.
Yeah, no, this has to do with, this came to the commission here a couple of months ago with Bruce and Mr. Steve Burian from AE2S. But this has to do with, it's a channel, it's a water supply issue. And what we're trying to do, it's actually a very low-cost way to get Cheyenne River to our water treatment plant. way to get Cheyenne River to our water treatment plant, so without building a pipeline across town, we can just get it into Drain 27, which is a pretty short run. So this is, this routing was a pretty cost-efficient way for us to get water to our water treatment plant. So if you look, really, where we're, this is a map of kind of Fargo and the lower, in the lower left, let's see if, well, in the, in the lower left, there's a box is what we're talking about, that's the area we're talking about in the red box, which is along the Cheyenne River, and then eventually gets to the Red River and gets to the treatment plant. So we're talking kind of a small area there. And this, this here shows a project and phasing, and Mr. Gensler is, his property is located on the left-hand portion of this, of this graphic, above the channel, so. And what his intentions were with this agreement, the deferral part refers to, he's just gonna keep it as farmland, so the infrastructure that's being built is something that he's not gonna utilize for the time being, keeping it as farmland. So that's where the deferral part comes in, so. But this, again, it's a, it's a low-cost way, this was the most cost-efficient routing to get Cheyenne River to the Red.
And what's the amount of specials on the property?
You know, the...
Tony mentioned 21 million, you're...
No, no, that's total deferred to the entire city of Fargo.
Oh, entire city, okay.
Yeah, no, it's, I guess, this is a cost split between the water utility, so what we're trying to do is partition it out, so that the water utility pays for the water supply portion of it, and that special assessment pays for the storms, or storm drainage improvements to serve the school and residents and development in that area. So I don't know exactly the cost for this particular phase of the project, I think it's, you know, right in the 700 or 800,000 dollar range, right there.
John, do you wanna comment? And then, Tony, you wanted to talk about just deferrals.
Yeah, just to focus on, so we know there's a number associated with, we know it's being deferred by city of Fargo, I thought this would be a good opportunity for people to hear, what does that mean to them, how does it work, and why do we do it?
Yeah, thank you for that opportunity to comment on that. Deferring of assessments has been a longstanding practice with the city of Fargo for years. Actually, to put it into context, the ordinance was adopted, help me with this, Eric, maybe 10 to 12 years ago, to put it into context, to say that deferrals are allowed, and we're using our Home Rule Charter powers to use those deferrals. Contracts arise in conjunction with development activities, and to give a few examples, brand-new development that runs out into farmland and adjacent property owners, like when they're building a school out far in a reach, those landowners that are running ag property wanna continue to have it to be ag property, so the city understands we don't wanna levy the assessments on them until the development occurs naturally, and so that's kind of the economic substance of using deferrals in brand-new development. Those contracts by ordinance are limited to 10 years, and there's triggering events that if the development happens quicker than that 10-year period, then we immediately begin to collect the assessments. So the deferral in just layman's terms means we do not bill the property owner for the assessments that have been levied against those properties, they're set aside, and then the contract agreements take place that determine when we turn on and turn off those assessments.
So the important thing I want people to understand, though, is that bill was still built, I mean, we did something there that cost money, and it's being deferred, so who's paying for that then, if they're not for that time period? Does that make sense?
Yes, if you follow the flow of funds, the special assessment debt service fund would be paying that obligation, and this ties into part of that discussion about the 1% override on bonding, there's a surplus that accrues in there as well, so the deferrals come out of there. Now, they're getting a break in their cash flow for up to that 10-year period, but the way the ordinance is set up is, after the 10-year period, they're billed, the full amortization period, so they're billed at, say, let's say it runs 10 years, so on year 11, they're billed for 25 years. It runs the entire term, they pay the entire amount of their assessments with interest, it's just on a delayed period. So there's some cash flow management that goes on during the life of a deferral, some of them come off quickly, quicker than 10 years, others run the full term, but the ordinance limits it to 10 years.
What's the longest deferral we have on the books? 'Cause I know the airport authority has deferrals from a long time ago, and they're never gonna pay it.
That's a good observation, and another example, too, that kind of ties into that, when we encroach upon urban property and we move in and develop urbanized-type infrastructure, there's been examples over the years along 25th Street South, down by 52nd Avenue, where they have these huge, large lots, so in some cases, there's been contractual agreements made with those homeowners to say, we'll bill you just as if you had an 80-foot lot or a 100-foot lot, and then, I don't know if you wanna weigh in on this or not, but I'm trying to explain the concept of it, and then if you redevelop at any point in time, your deferral comes off, and we're gonna bill you the full amount of the assessments. So that's been, if you will, a bit of an empathetic offer to the homeowner, an offer to the developer, to be able to tolerate the timing of various assessments, impacts of special assessments. So they are used, and just for full disclosure, because you seem to be asking those questions, there are 77 deferral contracts in the city right now, as of the end of the year, 53 of those are non-interest-bearing, deferrals in 24 are interest-bearing, which accrue interest during that deferral period. So again, what I said earlier, they're widely used, it's one of our development tools, we've used them for a long time, and we believe they are effective to help in the development process.
Thanks, Ken, just wanted to get that information out there, I don't think a lot of people know that there are referrals out there, and they aren't obviously then sure how they get paid or not paid, and how it gets funded, so thanks for the information.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. I'm, I think it's something that we've all become so much more schooled in specials in the last few months, and that's terrific, because this is one of the topics we need to, we need to vet significantly, along with arterials and along with that 1% fee, but and that's the value of you bringing this topic off the agenda, off consent, is to remind us that these are, these are ongoing, and there's several examples. The concern I've had raised, asked of me, is the simple notion that if you pay specials for something statutorily, those funds cannot be used for anything except for the specials that you're paying your monies for. And if you get a deferral, I'd like to know the implications of interests, who's paying the interest in the interim, are other people paying for it, is that fitting the spirit and intent of the law, that they're paying for somebody else's or our decisions to defer, and so on? So I think that, fitting into that bigger picture, would be valuable to all of us when we get our task force going and dig into this deferral topic much more deeply.
The city's paying for it now.
Yeah, the debt service fund is paying that obligation right now.
The specials debt service, or which debt service?
The obligation by which the specials have been pledged are an obligation of the city, and we have full faith and credit that we have to pay that bill.
Yep.
The timing of the assessments is determined based upon a normal amortization, which would be 95% of the assessments flowing through a normal amortization period, and if I do the numbers right, about 5% of the entire amount of special assessments outstanding are under a deferral contract. So it is important to keep it in the context, this isn't just a mass contract with a whole bunch of people. With regard to that, it's a fairly small percentage of the total, so we'd be happy to share all these details with you during this discussion with specials, and get everybody on board with how we use it as a tool, and if you think it's not a great tool, or it doesn't meet the test, then you'll have to figure out a different policy.
Just trying to protect the farmer that's caught, or a homeowner that's caught in a new development, so they don't get the huge assessment right away. We have a couple of homeowners down south side, too, that have the same issue, the deferrals 10 years, and they better develop or do something with it. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the agreement with the homeowner.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Garrick.
Yes.
Peppcorn.
Aye.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yep.
Mahoney.
Aye. Any other discussion or issues? Move to adjourn?[1797.37]